I'm perfect, thank you. We will call this meeting to order at 7:00 PM. Sorry about that. First up, we'll have our official oaths.
Brad, do you want to come on?
You can just raise your hand, or I have a Bible with me, but they can choose to raise it.
Do you want to swear in the Bible, or do you want to swear? So, how does that look on the screen? Can you see?
Yep. Looks good.
Okay, yep, you're good.
She's good.
Yep.
Do what you need to do.
I'll ask you to raise your hand, and repeat after me. I, Brad Schlossberger, swear that I will.
I will now turn the meeting over to Mayor Schlossberger.
Code of Conduct. Okay, so, council, as is required by the councillor code of conduct, all councillors must sign an oath for, also for the code of conduct, that they will abide by the code of conduct bylaw. And so that's what we're going to have Mayor Schlossberger and Councillor Ross do now. Just give a few, you all have already previously signed this, who are currently on council, but maybe just a little bit of review for those of, those who may be watching, or in the audience who don't know. But the councillors are signing to Schedule A of Bylaw 1641, which is the councillor code of conduct. There are sixteen provisions that they're promising to adhere to or abide by, that are contained within the code of conduct. And that generally is, refers to any number of things, respecting the decision-making process, avoiding using the position for personal gain or interest, respecting the, the privacy of council when they go into private deliberations, and, and generally striving to carry out and do their councillor, mayoral duties in the best interests of the town.
Okay. Bylaw seventeen fifty-seven, line? Oh, adoption agenda. Can I have a motion, please? Councillor Cutler.
Moved by Councillor Cutler that the agenda be accepted as presented.
All in favor? Okay, regular meeting minutes of September eleventh, twenty twenty-three.
I'll make a motion to adopt the regular meeting minutes from September eleventh.
Thank you. Question?
Moved by Councillor Meister that the regular meeting minutes of September eleventh, twenty twenty-three, be accepted as presented.
Okay, bylaw seventeen fifty, oh, all in favor? Approved. Bylaw seventeen fifty-seven, land use bylaw, public hearing. I open the hearing at seven oh seven. Anyone want to speak to that bylaw? Abe?
Okay, so this is a public hearing for bylaw seventeen fifty-seven, which is an amendment to the land use bylaw, changing the zoning from no designation to single detached residential. And this is for an area over near, on Westland Drive, over near the golf course. Previously, council passed a road closure bylaw. If you recall, this dates back almost a year, when, when you had first reading on this council. And at the time, this was a, an old kind of walkway, or in the towns, road plans, that wasn't used, that was maintained by town staff every year. And both of the adjacent landowners were interested in acquiring that property, each acquiring half of that, that walkway. And so, if you recall, the, certainly, all the costs associated with that are borne by the landowner as his standard for us. And so, the road closure bylaw had passed. This is the public hearing for the land use bylaw amendment. Administration did not receive any formal concerns or complaints from residents about this land use bylaw amendment.
Anyone in the audience have comments? Okay. Could I get a motion to accept this bylaw for a second reading?
No, just close it.
Call public here. Seven oh eight. Could I have a motion for the second reading? Councillor Kettles? Question?
Moved by Councillor Kettles to give bylaw number one seven five seven, a land use bylaw amendment, second reading.
All in favor? Approved. Could I have a motion for the third reading? Councillor Carlson? Question?
Moved by Councillor Carlson to give bylaw number one seven five seven, a land use bylaw amendment, third and final reading.
All in favor? Approved. Correspondents? Clersthome Haunted House. Abe?
Yeah, so this is a request for town council to assist with the haunted house. I believe this is the fourth annual haunted house they're proposing to hold over at the community centre. And they're looking to rent the lodge room for that event. The ask here is for four hundred and forty dollars to cover the cost of the venue rental. There will be free of charge admissions for, for the people in the community. And I've been here for two Halloweens now, and I think council historically has funded this request.
Questions, concerns? Councillor Cutler?
Moved by Councillor Cutler to support the third annual Halloween haunted house, to be held at the Clersthome Community Centre the weekend of October twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-three, with a donation of four hundred and forty dollars to cover the cost of renting the space.
All in favor? Approved. Opposed?
But I, I'm wondering if sometimes when, not everybody would participate in that, you know, if maybe they could get, generate something? I just wonder if they could think maybe of generating something else that would include more people in Clersthome in the event? Like if they have it, you know, I know it's Halloween, but I mean, not everybody will participate. So I'm just opening up and asking, maybe they could expand it to where it would include a lot more other people to be involved in an event like this? That's just my, my thought.
Working as part of it last year, I will say that a lot of people do go to it, and a lot of people enjoy it. They make an inclusive hour where they don't scare the little kids or anything. But they also do lots of other activities in the community that are open to everybody, and different people attend different events. But this is definitely a worthwhile one. And this year, any proceeds do go to the Skate Park Association to help build our skate park.
Yes, and it's great skate park, yes.
Okay. All those in favor? Opposed? Approved. Question? No, call for the question. Correspondents? Clersthome Local Press, Old Fashioned Christmas. Abe?
So, another annual request, for, this one for the Old Fashioned Christmas. The request here is to close off the parking lot for the day and evening to accommodate the Old Fashioned Christmas. I'll just review some of the activities here. So, the event will take place on December first. Late night shopping until nine, Christmas carolers around the Christmas tree in the parking lot, official lighting of the Christmas tree by the Citizen of the Year. They are also looking for council to attend that lighting as well. Be horse-drawn wagon rides, bonfire in the downtown parking lot. Museum board and staff will be there, welcoming committee will be there as well. And there will be an echo stage with performances throughout the evening. So, the request again here is to close the parking lot for the day and for the evening to accommodate the event.
Questions concerned?
I'll make a motion to close the parking lot for the Old Fashioned Christmas event.
Question?
Moved by Councillor Meister to allow the Clersthome and District Chamber of Commerce to use the downtown parking lot for the Old Fashioned Christmas event on December first, twenty twenty-three, to close the downtown parking lot, including all access points, and to allow bonfire in the downtown parking lot, weather permitting.
All in favor? Approved. Okay, request for decisions, strategic planning. Abe?
Yeah, with the new council, administration thought it would be a good time to actually have a mini strategic planning session. Obviously, we have a new mayor and a new member of council. We're also halfway through the term, so it's a good time to look at what's been done so far, have some maybe new input into how things are going, and certainly have some new input from the new member of council as well. So, we just threw a date out there on October four, Saturday, October fourteenth, from eight to one, however, we'll, we'll roll with whatever time works with everybody else.
Questions concerned? Councillor Meister?
The only concern I have is that the social centre would like to do strategic planning also on that day, all day long. So, if we could pick another day, great, if not, I'll have to miss it.
We can pick another date.
Yep.
Right?
Yes, why don't you just direct administration to coordinate a strategic planning date? And we'll, we'll just do something via email, that's probably the easiest way to do it.
Thank you.
Would the next Saturday work? Or we're just far out?
We'll figure it out. Request for decision, letter of support for?
Need a motion?
All we do, okay. Who would like to make that motion? The strategic planning? Councillor Kettles? Question?
Moved by Councillor Kettles to direct administration to coordinate a strategic planning date that fits everyone's schedules within the next month.
Okay.
All in favor?
All in favor? Approved. Request for decision on letter of support for fire training grant. Abe?
So, the MD applies for firefighter training grants for the entire region. Couple meetings, or last meeting, we had some correspondents inviting municipalities to apply for funding. The province provides funding for that firefighter training. And so, the MD is going to apply, however, they are requesting a letter of support towards their grant application.
Questions, concerns?
I will make a motion to write the letter of support for the MD.
Question?
Moved by Councillor Zimmer to write a letter of support for the Municipal District of Willow Creek's application for the twenty twenty-four Fire Services Training Program Grant.
All in favor? Approved. Request for decision, letter of support, regional housing supply. Abe?
So, we've been meeting for, for several months with our, it's called a REDA, Regional Economic Development, Development Association, Alberta Southwest. And they've been coordinating meetings with developing a consulting group called Ann Villages. And they're, they're proposing or interested in assisting municipalities in the region with the housing challenges, and find solutions to housing challenges. Their, their proposal is to build twelve modular homes, two-bedroom units of a thousand square feet, in, in each, each community that participates. They're hoping to get eight to twelve communities. The idea there is to have savings, basically have a similar project, housing project that goes into, again, eight to twelve communities, and find savings in consulting and engineering costs by placing similar projects, basically doing all that work at once, but for all communities. So, looking for a letter of interest here again, to say that Clersthome is supportive of this. There's no monetary, no monetary cost right now. However, they would be looking for at some point a donation of land, of at least an acre, and for serviced land in particular. We do have some land that would suit that, it's not serviced, however. We're working on getting servicing costs, what that would look like. But right now, those would all be decisions that would be made by council at a, at a further time. We're looking at getting in with a conversation with this group, and showing our support for it, saying that council is in favor of it, of proceeding, and working with Ann Villages in Alberta Southwest to explore the feasibility of this project. And so, the request here is to ask the provincial government for funding, to assist with the consultation project, consultation process, sorry, and planning process. And, yeah, that's the, that's the item.
Thank you. Questions, concerns? Councillor Cutler?
I have concerns as we, as we move ahead with the idea of what the modular homes looks like. I'd hate to pinpoint buying reserves, delegate what housing would go into those kinds of markets. But this is just a letter to support applying for these grants, not a commitment to, to being one of the communities.
That's correct.
Yeah, I just worry about delegating housing styles to certain areas that we don't have developed yet, and spending six hundred and fifty thousand dollars on prepping that land. So, I mean, it's a good idea, but I'd take some way more information before that.
Yep. Questions, concerns, anybody else? Could I get a motion to support this? Councillor Carlson? Question?
Moved by Councillor Carlson that the town of Clersthome provide a letter of support for the Ann Villages in Alberta Southwest regional housing project and grant proposal.
All in favor? Opposed? Okay. Approved. Information brief. By-election result. Abe?
Crane, did you want to run this one? Okay. All right, just wanted to do a, a public report on the by-election. By-election day was Monday, Monday, September eighteenth, at the Clersthome Community Centre. The town administration held an advance poll on Wednesday, September sixth. We also offered institutional votes at the Clersthome General Hospital, Willa Creek Continuing Care, Porcupine Hills Lodge, Cottonwood Village, Heritage Manor, and Parkside Manor. Having done institutional votes in the past, it's actually really rewarding to be able to bring the vote to people, so this is a good, a good thing, good spread. And the people who are actually able to participate through that, definitely appreciate it. Forward turnout is estimated to be at approximately thirty percent of eligible voters. And administration proactively decided to do a recount because of how close the vote was between, for councillor, between the first and second place candidates. So, we appreciate, certainly appreciate having an election for both positions. This is something that bodes well, there is public interest. Having an election shows that there's public interest in, in running for office. And so, we're pleased that we, we had elections rather than acclamations, or, or no nominees at all, so we're very happy with that result. It's one of the municipal indicators, Alberta Municipal Fairs tracks for municipalities, is whether or not, how many people nominate, how many nominees you have for a given position, and whether or not the positions are acclaimed. And here's the results. Any questions from council on, on the by-election?
Thank you for all the hard work.
Yes. Thanks, Crane. Information brief, fire department open house. Abe?
So, this is an invitation to council to attend the fire department open house. So, that will be on October fourteenth, and it coincides with Fire Prevention Week. The theme is Cooking Safety Starts With You, Pay Attention to Fire Prevention. So, the first portion of the open house is directed towards the general community, open to the general public, and the information stations, apparatus hall tours, meet and greet with the fire department members, and a safety presentation. So that runs from one to two. The second portion of the open house is going to be a recruiting session, recruitment of new members, that is actually an ongoing priority for the fire department. Fair bit of turnover from time to time, I currently, I believe there's two, I believe there's two available spots on the department. So, always a challenge to, just people, you have turnover and what have you, and there was a few retiring positions this year, longstanding, long-serving members retired. So, recruitment is always an important priority for the fire department. So, just an invitation to attend the open house on October fourteenth at 1:00 PM. And last year, I will say that they had the open house and nobody, nobody showed up. So, we're trying hard to promote this event and, and get people out.
Thank you. Information brief, RMA report on FCSS programs.
That's what happens when you come to a meeting.
So, Barb, thanks Barb, Barb Bell, our FCSS director is here to speak to this item.
Okay. So I hope you all read it, it's probably the best report I've seen in forever. Very happy that they submitted this. So, first of all, I just want to say, FCSS is all about the people, citizens of Clersthome, and we want them all to be healthy and happy. That's our main event, our main reason. But our mandate means that it's prevention that we deal with. And unfortunately, now, we're dealing with a lot of crisis situations. We're getting burned out, our staff is burned out already. So we have to be very aware of that, but even though it's our mandate, we don't turn anyone away. We help everyone that comes through that door. Even if we can't, we try to find a way that we can help them. So, this report was basically, it broke it down very well. The issues are, the government is basically ignoring FCSS as far as funding. Not giving us any extra funding every year is basically like clawing us back because everything goes up, wages go up. And without the funding, we are basically just run ragged, trying to keep up with what we're doing. We did get a small increase this year, five million dollars across Alberta. It sounds like a really lot of money, but it actually amounted to forty-five hundred dollars a year for us, for our department alone, which doesn't really give us much, maybe a program. So, that being said, we are doing a lot of things outside our mandate. We have other government agencies in place that part of our mandate is not to cross those boundaries. So, unfortunately, everything is going to the call system now, like a one-eight-hundred number, or, yeah, Mike, sorry. So, our clients, I, I'm, I mean, there isn't really any easy way to say it, but they don't have enough knowledge to do this. We have seniors that have never used computers, they're basically just starting to learn cellphones. We have a couple of ladies that come in all the time and ask for help with their cellphones. Just to be online, these web portals, they're not friendly at all. So we try to help them to get on these web portals. It requires an email address, so we're hot, we're, we're making email addresses for clients so they can get access to these government programs. They're never going to use their email, they don't even know what it is. So, we're just jumping through hoops to help these people to survive. It's not, it's not just financial survival, it's mental health. Anything to do with the government agencies has gone now to these online web portals. We have a very, a population of very- We have a very, a population of very low-income people and low-knowledge, low IQs, hard to deal with, unfortunately. They can't focus on this kind of stuff alone. They need people, they need face-to-face people, and unfortunately, FCSS offices are the only people around, so we're flooded with people now. So, the funding for sure is a big issue, but also that the government just decides to do these web portals, they don't ask any, they don't talk to anybody about it, it's just, we're just going to do this and everybody's going to deal with it. They pull a program like Parent Link, and they completely toss it out the window and they create their own program, which nobody knows what they're doing. It's been three, this is the fourth year of, I want to say hell, trying to get, figure out what they want from, like for data, what do they want from us to figure out, you know, if this program is working or not. It was a huge competition to get money from the program. We only got $36,000, which is a drop in the hat for children's programming. It was just too much competition, and unfortunately, if we got programming, somebody down the road didn't get the programming, didn't get the funding. So, it's just spreading it out, thinner and thinner all the time. And then, to top it all off, unfortunately, this is probably the worst year I think I've ever seen in the 10 years that I've been here. It's very, very sad, unfortunately, with COVID. We have a lot of social issues, we have a lot of anxiety, we have people that are afraid to come out of their homes, they don't want to associate with anyone, there's been a huge division of people in our community, hard to deal with, and we just don't have the resources in our small town. The big cities have the resources, and then unfortunately, they get all the money. So, I guess my ask today is that if you could just look over the policy recommendations, if you have a chance to talk to any government officials, if you could plead our case, ask for more funding, we're way behind on our funding. We're doing great things in our community, I'd have to say, we're very lucky, we're blessed here. We get to do a lot of things for free, we have a lot of resources that we can use for free, we can access. We're doing the best that we can, we're running as many programs as we can. Our funding that we give out, we try to give out as much as we can to other agencies so that they can do their magic as well. Yeah, I just, I think, just go to bat for us, we're really important, and we've gone through a few years where they've threatened to cut us out, they've threatened to, we've asked for more money, and they've threatened to claw us back if we don't be quiet. So, I mean, it's just, it's sad. We want to help the people, so if they're going to dump all of this work on us to help all these other people because their agencies have gone online, we need more money, we need more funding. Also, I just want to say that we're very fortunate as well because we have two paid staff for FCSS, but we also have a third person now. Kim is doing our senior support. She's being paid through a grant through the Elder Abuse Coalition, and we're super appreciative that we have her, and we're going to try as much hard as we can to keep her because it's not costing us anything. So, if you have any questions, I'm here to try and answer them. Nothing?
Questions?
No questions, but we just want to tell you that you do a fantastic job. I see the difference you make with some people, and you guys are invaluable in this community, and we love you.
Thank you, Candace. Thank you.
We appreciate you. Love is a big word. Now, working side by side with FCSS for many years, it is a very deep, impacted program here in the community that does get used and abused on a regular basis with no glory or no supportive system. But yeah, no, it is a very core program within our community for many generations, for many populations, and it is a very vital piece. It makes my job a lot easier knowing that they're down there resourcing things out and helping people. So, I mean, yeah, when we're up in Edmonton, it'll be one of the top of the subjects that we can promote and bring up up there, so thank you for all you do, and thank you for your time tonight.
Thank you.
I was just going to mention, if there was like a condensed, kind of like version we can maybe forward off to our MLA with going up to, I'm sure she'll see it before. Look at that.
Rob just wrote this, the MD presented it at their last meeting. Earl's on my board, so he took it forward, and it's very condensed, so I don't know if you want to just ask Rob if you can borrow that?
I think I can find one.
Are you sure? It's pretty tough, I don't know.
Perfect.
Don't want no copyright infringements going on here, so.
Thanks, Barb.
Thank you, Barb.
Information brief, CAO report. Jeez, could you imagine?
So, just attached for your information, council, is the CAO report. All of the departments have provided an update on some of the activity they've been up to over the summer. Any questions from any of you? Just trying to pull it up here. There we are.
Questions? Questions, concerns? No. Thank you, Abe. Information brief, counselor, council resolution status. Abe?
Yeah, just another update for your information, council, on the status on resolutions from previous meetings. It's a lot of pages. And there we are. Careful. There we are.
Questions, concerns? Looks good. Thank you. Adoption of information items. Could I have a motion, please? Counselor Ross? Question?
Moved by Counselor Ross to adopt the information items as presented.
All in favor? Approved. Could I have a motion to go in camera, please?
I'll make the motion to go into in camera.
Counselor Meister? Question?
Moved by Counselor Meister to go in camera at 7:38 p.m. for the following items. A intergovernmental relations FOIP section 21.
All in favor? Approved. We are in camera. Could I have a motion to come out of in camera, please?
I'll make a motion to come out of in camera?
Counselor Zimmer, question?
Moved by Counselor Zimmer to come out of in camera at 8:06 p.m.
All in favor? Approved. Motion to...
He's ready.
Is he? Motion to set a date for...
I'll make a motion to proceed with intergovernmental matters discussed in a closed session.
Question?
Moved by Counselor Zimmer to proceed with the intergovernmental matter as discussed in closed session.
All in favor? Approved. Motion to adjourn. Counselor Ross? Question?
Moved by Counselor Ross that their meeting adjourn at 8:07 p.m.
Thank you.